Sitting up straight for this stuff.
Keeps you sitting up straight. No slouching.
You stop the slouch.
What's that? Okay. I'm gonna call the November 1st, a meeting of the zoning board of appeals in the town of Groveland to order at 7:30. I have one public hearing tonight and then a couple of business items for the board. So I'll start with the public hearing. I'll read the public notice into the record. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 1st, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the main meeting room of Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass. Under the general laws, Chapter 48 as amended. For application 2017-9 made by A.W. Chesterton for the premises located at 860 Salem Street, Plat 47, Lot 17, for our request to seek a variance for relief for a new sign according to applicable sections of the Groveland zoning bylaw, Section 11.6.3.2. So I'm happy to hear from the applicant to present your application if he wants to move the...
So others can see it, how do you want me to... I can come right up there, I don't mind.
Um...
How do you want to do this?
Charlie, where... How can the camera...
Yeah.
Can the camera see him here? Okay. I don't think there's anyone in the audience for this application, so if you wanted to show us.
Okay.
If anybody would like to see it, please feel free to ask and we can turn it around.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing our application. I'm Jay Khan from the Sign Center and Paul Priestley from A.W. Chesterton. With this application, the zoning bylaw of signage 11.6.3.2 really doesn't address this kind of property. It's a 70-acre property, 500 employees. And there's only the one main sign at the front entrance that's slightly older. The other are additional wayfinding signs and how to use the property for 70 acres. So this is the site plan. This is the street. We're asking for a little bit of relief for square footage on that sign. There's gonna be a directional here. Here is an in-code building sign that we're building, but just so for reference, we're gonna show you that. But that's an in-code by right sign and already permitted. And then one more sign because their training facility isn't a Baptist to identify their training facility. This is a sign that's in code by right and this is at their main entrance. And they're high-end signs, their Pierce Cut Push Through, nice signs that are consistent with their business. But this is an in-right, unilluminated sign on the building. This is the main... This is the main entry sign. We're going to... It's on a currently brick monument. We're gonna leave that and clad it so it's in the brand colors and add a new... It's currently a light box, but we're also gonna do this Pierce Cut Push Through, so the illumination while illuminated goes down, because all things... The only things that are illuminated are the letters versus the background. And fits their current branding. And so this is 25 square feet where 20 is allowed. So a five-foot relief request for this one. This would be the one by right sign for freestanding sign, but relief for square footage.
Is it this gonna be the same size as the one that's there now?
One that's there now is slightly smaller, which is... I had it in the notes. This one's just slightly larger than what they're...
But it's the same height and basically the same base.
That's correct. That's the same base, that's correct.
Well, no, I knew the design, but I couldn't quite tell if it...
It is slightly larger.
It looks like it is a little bigger, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
This is a wayfinding sign, so once you're in the property, so to identify to users of the property where the visitor entrance is. Again, the same branding. This is a non-illuminated sign, but now we're into the campus anyway, so there's no public view of this sign. But this would be a request for number of sign. So this is an additional freestanding sign well into the property. And the last one is a post and panel sign, also non-illuminated. This is on the backside of that building. I'll pull up the site plan again to show you where all of those are. But this is for people that they're training all the way around the back to identify the entrance to the training center. So from the site plan, the street, this is the main entrance sign. This sign is the one that invites, identifies the visitor entrance. This is the main entrance, and that's the by right sign on the building. And then around that building is the training center and the identification of that post and panel sign. So our request is for five additional square feet on the main sign, two additional freestanding signs for relief on a large property that the ordinance really doesn't address that kind of a property in the community. And it's really needed for this kind of a property, both for safety, for users, for the shipping receiving, whether it's truckers or just car visitors, and the proper identification or wayfinding on this property. So I guess mostly topographical, if you wanna go by margin.
Great, thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Is this sign lit, you know, as soon as the sun goes down, 24 hours a day, if need be? Is that...
Question. The sign will be on a timer. It doesn't have to be lit 24 hours a day, but currently the sign that's in now is lit, not backlit, but lit from incandescent space in the sign.
Is there a need to light it and say, you know, at 2:00 in the morning? Do you have trucks that need to locate the property, say, third shift, if you will?
Yeah, we have third shift, but we do not have trucking. Trucking usually ceases at 8:00 PM, but we do have a third shift that does come on site.
Okay. I'm not... Just curious if any of the neighbors would be concerned with a lit sign, you know, after hours overnight type of thing, you know?
Well, yeah, I wanna remind you that it's a Pierce Cut Push Through, so none of the background lights and only the characters' lights, so it's not emitting light. It's pretty well contained in identifying the space.
And the current lights are actually lights shining onto a sign?
Correct.
And you said that the sign indicating visitor entrance is not lit?
That is correct.
And can you talk about whether... How visible that is from the roadway?
Not at all.
It's not at all that it's behind the building?
There are gates, that's well into the property.
More questions?
So the only one you can see from the street is the street sign, right?
That's correct.
Yep.
Oh, I had no more question. To the extent that the way the bylaw reads is that one... You're allowed one sign, freestanding sign at 20 feet. You're requesting additional signs to the extent that these additional signs also exceed the 20 feet, it's just the...
No, just the one.
Just the...
That's correct.
The visitor entrance one.
Correct. So this one, one and a half by five or seven and a half?
Seven feet.
And the other one is...
I just had a question about how that... The size was calculated. You have it at 30 square feet, which looks like it's just the top part.
It is the one at the top.
I was just trying to make it clear for... If we issue you a permit that when you go to get a building permit for it, that Sam agrees with us, that it's 30 square feet. I guess, questions also for the board, whether the words visitor entrance on the bottom part make that part of the sign, so that it's actually larger?
That's larger than the base, but we can certainly add it to square footage?
Yeah. I think I got 55 square feet if I use the entire black part and gray part to be...
So it'd be five and a half by 10.
That makes... Yeah, 55.
If you do the whole thing.
Yeah.
How many feet of frontage do you have on that property?
Five feet. I always say 300 feet.
Go on there. Really read that.
Yeah, I can't read that.
I believe it says 261.
Is it pretty much centered within that frontage? How close is it to the nearest to butter, do you know?
To the butter?
Yeah.
Actually, I would say another 200 feet to the closest to butter, except for across the street there is a business.
Is it pretty much centered on the property?
Yeah.
No, it's centered within the building. It's more toward the right of the property. And I don't know if it's that, but recently we just bought the abutted property as well. There's a home on the corner.
Okay.
That we now own.
So you're not really close to anybody?
No, nobody.
Oh, would you?
Any more questions from the board?
No, I'm good.
I will open it up to any members of the public who wanna comment. I think there were any, okay. Anybody have any thoughts about how they wanna go forward?
I think it's a reasonable request. I mean, the size of the business, the size of the property, you know?
Yeah, you won't see any of the other signs really from anywhere. It's all pretty well enclosed from...
That's correct. The signs except for the entrance.
Yeah, the ones in the rear, I mean...
Yeah.
I don't even need the... You need a permit for those, why do you? Out of sight, out of mind. You know what I'm saying? What if it was a bathroom sign, would you, you know, you need a permit for that?
Those aren't regulated by the...
30 square foot, you know? Restroom sign, would you need a permit? Sorry, random thought.
It also seems to me that the illumination will actually be less than what's currently there.
Less detrimental.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the whole area is lit too anyway, so it's...
It's the legal standard, right? You can't cause harm.
And I don't see any impacts on traffic or safety. In fact, you know, it will increase safety on your site.
No one's up in arms over it, I mean, the angry mob here, you know?
Kathy, any thoughts?
No, actually, all the questions I had were answered, so I think I'm good.
Okay. I'm happy to answer.
Quite the elaborate, you know? All of that to get a sign permit, huh?
Correct, but we do this all the time. This is a lot better than Cambridge.
Yes.
The People's Republic of Cambridge? I've heard of them. Try to stay out of there.
Yeah, with the two-step process there.
I'll make a motion then.
Make a motion, Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted for the three requested signs. The first at the road exceeding the permitted freestanding sign by five square feet, as well as the two additional signs. Had the locations and the sizes that have been presented. That's it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be well.
Okay.
Good night.
So, taking the next matter, we had a request for an informal meeting to discuss the applicability of the certain provisions of the accessory apartment bylaw from Mr. and Mrs. Stokes. If you wanna come on up and we can have a discussion. And Sam Jocelyn's here also to assist us in this discussion. To the extent that you get our input, I think his input is probably a little bit... Not more valuable, but equally valuable, because we all have to agree.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Before we get into it, I just wanted to note that, meeting in the informal setting, none of the... There's no decisions being made by the board. This is advisory and we can change our mind, you know? Members of the board can change, so...
It's non-binding, it's just...
Non-binding on us, but... So...
We can't give advisory opinions.
But we can, you know, give our understanding of how the bylaw applies.
I know it's gonna be hotly contested because it already is. But who doesn't know? The neighbors took us to court, we had a building permit and everything else. So that's why I'm trying to get my ducks in a row, so that when we apply, we can avoid doing this again.
Okay.
Do it once and do it right.
Well, I thought we did.
So what are your questions?
Well, the 900 square feet, is that gross or net?
Net of what?
Well, when I talked with Sam, and I mentioned that a few times too, it's whether or not you count...
Closet space.
Walls, no.
Oh, the interior, the walls?
And everything else, the gross and net.
Trying to even find them.
You know, if you're building a 20 by 20 building and you're using six-inch, you know, tubias.
Yeah.
You've just shrunk it down a foot each way.
Right.
So are you talking livable space or we're talking gross? And that's... I'm looking before I have my architect figure out the square footage of deducting closets and everything else. And I don't mean to put you guys on the spot, I'm looking for a little spiritual guidance.
Is there a definition that defines it as living space?
There is.
I would think it would be living space.
Well, then that comes on the floor area livable.
So you don't live between... You don't live between the walls?
But what I'm asking you is...
Right, do you?
On page seven...
If you're a mouse.
It says floor area livable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of the gross horizontal area of the floors of the dwelling unit used or intended to be used for living, sleeping and cooking purposes, excluding the cellar.
Yeah.
Excluding the cellar area with less than 10% of the walls taken, windows.
Yeah.
Bathrooms, toilets, lounges, bathrooms, floors, communicating corridors, stairways. So...
So that measures from the outside of the wall? Gross?
That's... But what I'm saying is, can we... Can I tell my architect to calculate the living area from here?
Based on that definition, you mean?
What page is that on, sir?
That's on page seven of the definitions.
Sam, can...
Well, the...
Can you get a mic?
Oh, wait, just come up there.
Yeah.
I'll share.
I'm... And apologies, I'm not trying to set you on the spot.
No, not at all, I mean...
My architect's gone over this a number of times and we had to get it reported.
Yeah.
And it's uncommon and it's gonna be hotly contested. That's why I'm asking.
That's great. Not at all, I mean, the bylaw is...
Yes, this is one of the sections...
We tried to do due diligence on this. I don't know if you know the history of this.
It's still not easy. I actually don't know the whole of it.
Do you mind if I see that? I think I grabbed the...
Yeah, I don't know if you know the...
I grabbed the old one.
I know that in the past, how we've done it is that it's mostly been net, minus the unfinished basements, workshops, unfinished attics, closets and garage space. So whatever that is, minus those items, that's usually what we've done. How... Just a quick question. How many square feet is your entire home? Now?
That depends. He's figured it out several different ways, because we're assuming we have to figure the house the same as the in-law.
We're in catch 22 here.
So we don't know which way to go.
But it's a 900 max, right, regardless?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it starts off with floor area. So the floor area is the floor area. You don't measure the walls for the floor. There's no floor inside the wall, so it's floor area, livable.
My question is, do we count, do we deduct for the cellar stairs and all the stairs coming down? Because it's not living space. That's my question.
I mean, I... And this is where I wanna be on the same page here, because, you know, our interpretation, if it differs from Sam's and...
And this is where... Or why we're looking at changing these definitions to match up with building code, because what we have here and what standard practice is very different. The definitions speak specifically to exterior walls and gross, but then we talk about livable area, which common sense would dictate it's your habitable space, which is defined in the building code as those usable spaces, excluding, you know, a handful of things such as closet, stairways. I have the definition here. So, you know, habitable is a space in a building for living, sleeping, eating or cooking. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, closet halls, storage or utility spaces and similar areas are not considered habitable space, which is what we'd like to go to in the new zoning. The unfortunate part right now is we have this current zoning that specifically states exterior walls and gross floor area. It does still exclude these oddball spaces, your, you know, and I could certainly read into it, you know, excluding closets, stairways, bathrooms, despite the fact that it doesn't specifically call them out in our bylaw, you know, because it leans towards those similar types of locations, you know, porches, carports, breezeways, storage.
Where does it reference walls?
Under floor area talks about measured from exterior faces of walls enclosing each building.
Why does it say that?
Definition of floor area.
Floor area livable, the sum of gross horizontal...
Nope, back one, one definition.
Back one definition, I have educational use, non-exempt.
You listen?
Oh. Oh, it's printed on two sides, actually.
Saving money.
So what I was trying to do is get a consensus.
So, and then the other thing is when you go to apartment size, it doesn't talk about either of these definitions, floor area livable or floor area. It talks about the maximum floor size of an accessory apartment within a principal dwelling shall not exceed 25% of the habitable area of the dwelling which it's located. So we don't have a definition of habitable, which typically when I don't have a definition, I defer to building code.
They took that out in 1950?
So, yeah. So we've got these two definitions at the beginning that start talking about these livable spaces, but they're not used in this section. So that's where the interpretive piece comes in, is...
That says habitable area shall exclude unfinished basements, workshops, attics, closets and garage space. So we've overlooked that part.
But if we're... Really, the question is, when the zoning board looks at this, are they gonna be looking at floor area livable or habitable? Floor area livable is gonna be your gross, your exterior walls, and, you know, including habitable, if we use that, I tend to defer to the building code, which then gives you your interior spaces and...
So the building code does have a definition of habitable area?
Yep. Which is more, sounds like what's in line with what the zoning board's been approving. But obviously, you can see where the confusion is, is if you wanna... Depending on which side you wanna be on, I guess, is how you're gonna read it.
You didn't pick up on this in the draft?
It's stage two. We got it?
We're debugging it now.
It is, it is. We got the definitions rewritten.
I know.
I don't wanna tell you what it costs just to play this game. It's not fun.
I know.
So, just to play it out, am I to understand that the difference makes a difference to you, one foot, you know, measuring from the outside?
No, it's just, you know, you have things that... We had a accessory apartment already accepted years ago. And they deducted everything, so that we had a gross area of 20 by 22, two stories. That's 880. And another 48 feet, which is 900 and so on.
Yeah.
But that... The thing we found, I'm at a loss for words, because I'm trying to stay calm. Our permit that we had from the ZVA. When Jimmy Dole and the rest of the folks were here, they cut that down by deducting all the things that there.
Yeah, the closets and everything.
Found the 776 feet.
Okay.
Now, I never... We never received that from Patz and Skeena. When the board passed it, I'm talking 13, 14 years ago, maybe, was it 15?
It was in 2008.
So when this originally went back to you people, when we sent the application in, and it said we didn't need to go for another hearing, we found it in Sam's office, in my folder on the 92 7-star row. The original that was supposed to be down at the registry of deeds. So we found it 15 years later, and I just put it in last spring.
You filed it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the problem with that one...
We filed it under the old rules, and now it's gonna make a difference, because I have a couple other questions.
Yeah, and one of the problems with that was, one of the condition was, any alteration of that permit would need to come back for approval. And where they're taking their second story, relocating it down onto the ground for, you know, future aging.
Yeah.
And creating that attic space, you know, getting rid of the bedrooms up there, reducing the windows, creating, you know, attic storage space, whatever you wanna call it. The problem is now, again, how is this board gonna be looking at it, where Dole's board looked at it as your net floor area, less closets and all those things? And now you've got this little bit ambiguous language that, you know, prior to him coming to the board, you know, he came to me and I have my opinion on what it should be. I, you know, I feel confident where they use the word habitable and here they don't use floor area. My opinion's gonna be, I'm going to the definition of habitable under the building code. Whether that's right or wrong, or you agree, is a whole other thing, and I don't wanna send him off saying, here's my opinion, and then go to the board and you guys say, well, our opinion is just the opposite, so...
Yeah. Can you tell me one more time, habitable area under the building code excludes...
A space in the building for living, sleeping, eating or cooking. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, halls, storage or utility spaces and similar areas are not considered habitable. I... That's what I thought was interesting.
And, you know, and some of that's reflected in our definitions, and you can see, they start going with, under floor area livable, they talk about porches and areas with less than five-foot clear headroom under sloping ceilings. That directly relates back to the building code. So again, I feel it kind of supports that argument that, you know, they were somewhat looking at it, but, you know, it's a little... They use gross, but then start talking net in the language, so... But at the same time, section 713 on apartment size doesn't refer back to floor area in any way, shape or form, it just talks about habitable.
Yeah. If it doesn't reference it in this section, then those definitions don't literally apply.
Right, so if the building is right, can you go back to this, right?
Right, I use the language that's in the section, because...
Where would that floor area definition be applicable?
I have no idea. I'd have to go through and see, you know, where it's used in here. I'm assuming somewhere in there there's a floor area. Yeah, there you go.
I'm pretty sure we didn't leave in any definitions that weren't used.
Right.
I'm pretty sure floor area is used somewhere.
Parking space required, references floor area.
Under regulations, it's...
It's referenced a lot, 24 times, so it's mostly the commercial stuff.
Does that interpretation sound like how you usually think about the 900 square feet? But it's...
I've always thought it was floor space, which to me is interior.
And not closets.
And not closets. You know? It doesn't include bathrooms, but I suppose you could have a huge bathroom with a jacuzzi and, you know, double, triple showers, you know?
And a couch.
No beds in there, though.
We're trying to address, you know, some of the things that have happened in training. I mean, nobody wants to not get on with their neighbors.
Yeah, and unfortunately, they're caught mid rewrite.
Yeah.
You know, this is one of the sections we're looking at, both definitions and rewriting the apartment, in-law apartment by law. So they're caught in the old horrible language and a...
But if it's... If that floor area definition is not specific to the accessory apartment section, I think we're free to interpret it as the building code. A building...
The way it's gonna be here on both sides.
The building... Oh, well, there's an ambiguity, there's more than one possible interpretation. So tie goes to the discretion of the board.
Yeah. And I mean, really, the intent of the 900 square feet is to keep accessory apartments to an accessory use rather than a primary use.
Well, our son's buying the house. And if the second floor was going to be stored, and it's gonna be walled off and unheated, well, if it's gonna be a problem, we're gonna connect it. My son is getting a permit very soon, and I don't wanna speak out of school for him, he hasn't owned the house yet. But, you know, if it's... But, you know, if, if it's going to be a bone of contention, and we're going to break through from our, our family room over the garage, and go across the six-foot entryway that's on the first floor, behind the garage is the entryway for the in-law apartment. The in-law apartment is behind our garage, and we're going to break through on the second floor, so that will go to my son's house. It, it takes some of the nastiness away from, they're calling, they're telling me I'm going to live there.
One of, one of the concerns of the neighbors is the attic, or the second floor that's being abandoned, to put that, those bedrooms on the first floor will then after be reused for...
Creep into me.
Yeah, yeah, which...
Well, it's, if I said I wasn't going to do something, I don't, and if you can, Sam can attest to this, how thick is my file from all the building permits?
I've not found many violations yet, so.
And, it's, you know, I, I try to do it right. If I say I'm going to do something, I do it.
So, you're planning to transfer the property prior to your application?
No.
Because once you have...
He's going to have to apply again.
Right, okay, that's right, I want to make sure you knew that.
I've already given the heads up.
Because I'm wondering if it makes sense.
The following section, it says code compliance.
New application.
So, it says the accessory apartment must be determined and comply with current safety, health, and construction requirements before occupancy, so, I mean, construction requirements, would that be a reference to building code, I would think?
Any of the other codes, yeah, yeah, cell, plumbing, electric.
But if it's referencing building code, I probably should say building code.
Yeah, and that's one of the things with zoning, there's, there's no definitive tie between the two.
There isn't.
But that's, that's sort of what we're trying to work out with some of the definitions at the Springtown meeting, is to make that tie, so that when people talk about habitable space, a story, what a, you know, a single-family dwelling is, that those definitions don't mix people up, because that's where a lot of the confusion ends up.
Because we don't have a definition here for habitable, habitable, habitable area.
So, to me, they mean somewhat the same definition.
So, then you have to look outside the fork on as of the document here, and you have to look for definition of habitable area, and is that a code, is that a code reference?
Absolutely, and typically what I'll do is I will...
There's a definition for that, under CMR.
Yes, yep, so I'll typically go to a CMR first that's related to it, if there's nothing in the CMR, I'll go to the Webster's definition.
And do we have that, that's a binding authority?
I'll pick a copy of that up from which law.
You can have that one unless...
No, they can have it if they...
I wrote it down.
I was going to talk to you after, see if I can have it combined.
So, my, I guess my question is, would this be an old application coming back for a change, or is this, is that what you're, because of this 15-year thing, it's like, you were the owners at that point, I hope, I assume, right?
Yeah, they are still, so, depends on how they want to apply and how the board wants to hear it. Is it an alteration of the existing permit? My suggestion, most likely, you know, if, if I was in their shoes, is I would have a completely new application, and that way I'm not jeopardizing my existing. Not that that you really can jeopardize it once it's already there, you can just be denied further, but...
If it makes sense for a new owner to apply.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering.
I don't know if that makes a legal difference one way or the other, but, you know, I just do building code.
Yeah.
We're going to apply so that it, everything is done, and then when my son buys the home, and he knows we're going to be applying again.
You know?
I mean, I, I, it's going to be built, there'll be no changes, it should be, this is, you know, something that's already been accepted, and there's no change.
So, that, that's, my understanding is you're not actually building anything new, you're just trying to legalize your...
After we get this done, what we're doing now, when my son owns the house...
Okay, I see, I see.
He may add on, you know, a bathroom or something upstairs, but it's not going to have, we're not going to be doing any more work to the in-law. I can't work now, we have a court order that I can work and finish the outside of the building and close it to the left. That's, I can't work inside, I can work inside the old building, but white water.
Well, it sounds like we are of the opinion, the interpretation is that it's habitable area, that that is internal livable area, not gross, square footage.
It says here, a space in a building, in.
True.
Doesn't say, you know, including the walls, or, it's in.
Well, and you don't typically sleep, eat, and cook outside, right? That's usually an indoor activity, depending on the weather.
Think, think about it, right? If they're excluding hallways, right?
Yeah.
And, and they say toilet rooms and closets, why would they include walls?
Yeah.
It defines reason.
Yeah, you don't just hang out there.
Well, that's why, we're kind of caught, we're the guinea pigs, and...
Lucky.
I don't like being a guinea pig.
I, I, I think it's a reasonable interpretation that it's interior space.
And, and that's how we applied it in the past, so.
But if you have a...
And that's all, we're, I'm not trying to reinvent it.
But, you know, if you have open concept living, where does the living room end and the hallway begin? I mean, you know, you, you can, you know, you can play semantics with a lot of things, you know, you can go, you can go round and round. Where's the hallway? Well, that's, you know...
It's all hallway.
Half the room, you know?
That's my reasonable guess. Were there more questions that you had?
Yes, I had another one, closed-in porch, a preseason room that's closed. Can that be treated, is that treated, it's, what it, it's going to be outside and experience, it's a deck, and I want to put a roof on it, on the in-law.
Yeah, okay.
There's a screened-in porch and use, what are they called?
Storm doors.
Storm doors that have screens, and you can just, when it rains, you can flip them on.
Is it ground, like, ground floor, or is that...
Yeah, it's a step down from the, from the apartment, it's on the back of the apartment.
But not second floor?
No, 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 it's like a deck, but I want to put a roof over it and close it.
So, is that part of the living space?
Yes.
It's not heated and it's not insulated, so.
It doesn't have a foundation, it's on post.
I don't think that really matters, it's more of a, if it was heated, then it would definitely, but if it's not heated, I don't think it can be counted at all.
Non-habitable is...
Is it for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking?
No.
There you have it, so.
And that's the thing, it's...
Eating, sleeping.
Well, it could be for sleeping, but basically, it's not part of your living space.
It wouldn't be a bedroom.
It's getting open doors on.
No, sleeping would be a bedroom, it's not a bedroom.
It is, so, but I'm asking because I know it's going to be asked when we count.
Well, I know you can't count it as a bedroom if it doesn't have heat in it, so.
Right, well, it's going to be, you know, it's not insulated, it's just, it's like a deck. I think that's it.
So, is that interpretation is kind of the same?
Same as building code, yeah, unheated, unconditioned space is typically not part of your habitable or living space within the, the building code.
So, it doesn't violate setback or anything like that?
No, no, we had a, I had an engine, a site planned on, Sam, I've talked with Sam for over, before we did this, and all the, we thought everything was square and right, so...
Almost.
Okay, so I think that one was clear.
That's it, that's it.
Those were the only two?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I copy this and give that to my architect, so he can come up with some numbers?
Yep, it's just a copy, so you, it's all yours.
Excuse me.
All right, so we know definitely what you can count in our...
Yes, well, until the, yeah, it looks like this is, it looks like everybody's on the same page to the terminal. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Should be common sense, right?
No.
We're hanging in, I'll tell you, it's been a fun ride, bumpy ride.
Yeah, learn a lot more about the process than you ever thought you'd ever know.
Yeah, oh, and then some. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
So, moving along to the next agenda item, Sam and I talked about him coming to talk to us generally, sort of about, Sam, do you want to grab that one? Okay, there you go. Generally about application process, the application itself, how, what the flow is, you know, just kind of general stuff about that, and, I don't know, did you have anything specific you wanted to start with, or, and also, I don't know, I sent around, yeah, a draft of the application form that I've been working on.
Yep, I looked at the form, I mean, I think it is much more concise and, you know, updated, I'm assuming this is an electro, something they can fill in electronically?
Well, that was what I was hoping, it's currently in Microsoft Word, so, you know, that could always be done, but that gets kind of clunky sometime, it's all in, like, tables, which may make life kind of a nightmare for people, but I'm hoping that at work, somebody in our document department would be very nice and turn it into a PDF that's fillable for me, which, I mean, that was the idea, was that it could be filled out, like in Adobe, so it could be typed and submitted electronically, in addition to being filed with town clerk, because, I mean, that's the legal process, but I just think it would be so much nicer, you know, Julie wouldn't have to mail all of the stuff to us, we could just do it electronically.
It's something I can also speak to the software company that we use for the permitting.
Oh, yeah?
They can do custom documents that will track by property by, you know, we will link it to Patriot for the applicant info, as well as track status of the permit. It can be tasked out to board members, once it comes in, Julie could receive it, just click on who the board members are, send it out, just like I do with the permits, so I send it off to, you know, Water and Sewer, Water Health, whoever needs to look at it, it can just be shot off, so that's certainly something I can ask and see what, what type of costs we're looking at. It's something I'm doing for conservation in the other town, I've done for street opening permits, and alcohol permits, dog licenses, so, I mean, it doesn't hurt to, I can shoot them this and say, hey, what, you know, have you done it for anyone else?
Yeah.
And what type of cost are we looking at? I've done a lot of nice things for them to try and get them in this area, to get in other towns, maybe they'd be nice back.
Yeah, that would be often.
Help us out.
For our blog.
And that way, too, anyone that wants to look as to what the status of it is, whether it's the homeowner, whether it's a buyer, whether it's board members, they can see, you know, this is what's submitted, and here's the status.
Yeah.
You know, that might be a good communication piece for everyone, and that way, too, it's an electronic format where they can just send it in.
Right. It just makes the record-keeping easier.
Yeah, well, it's fantastic, anytime I want to look for something, I just type in a property, and it brings me up all the permits that they have, I pick the type of permit, and this would just be another line item under the property that would say, you know, the other nice thing is I'm also working with MVPC to link their, my map overlays with the software, they are compatible, the two are very excited to work together, so it would be something else that when you went to this application, you could pull up a parcel map that would show zoning, water, sewer, you know, just would give you all that information in one spot, rather than jumping to this map and that map and Patriot, and...
That would be fantastic.
It's a little ways coming, you know, I don't want to promise the world tomorrow, but it's something that they are very actively pursuing, because if they can do that with the MVPC, there's other similar organizations where if they can start pairing with them, they get more business. So, out of the 13 communities in Mermaid Valley, I think we got six so far on the software, another three looking, our goal is to get to the 13, and I, I don't work for the company, I don't get anything out of it, the, what I get out of it is consistency, the contractors are happy, they get one login, they have a pull-down menu, we pick whatever town they're working in, it takes their information, populates the fields, pulls from Patriot, the homeowner information, populates that, so, takes all that document filling time just out of the big process. The other nice thing, then, it forms a good database for all of us, as the guy sitting behind the desk, we can start looking for all those contractors, see who's doing what, you know, and what, what problems that happen out there. So, I'll, I'll shoot off an email and send this off to them, and, you know, at least, you know, see what they think about it, but I don't think it's a, it's not going to hurt to ask them anyway.
Sure, yeah. Rather than kind of going to the substance of the application form yet, do you want to talk about kind of how our process works, and like, we, I mean, just, you know, some towns make people apply for a building permit and get denied, so that you can tell them exactly what relief they need, and we don't do that.
Yeah, it's...
And I'm a little bit of a purist in that you don't have to, because the statute doesn't say you have to, but it would actually be really helpful.
In Newbury, we implemented it so that everyone starts with me, the nice thing with that is, one, I'm aware of what's going on, so when you get the nosey neighbor calling and going, hey, what's going on, I go, I don't know, which really doesn't make us look that great. The other nice thing is I can take them through the document, and once I'm comfortable with the zoning board and how they operate their opinions on things, or I can, you know, look at past decisions and say, hey, you know what, I've seen these go through, if you take this off or add this, or make these adjustments. We have Plum Island, which is very heavily regulated, and the zoning is difficult to understand, so, it's helped a lot with people coming in and me kind of tweaking a little bit, so that they go to the board with a better chance of passing, which helps the board out, they don't have to have as many hearings, and then helps the applicant out, they don't have to keep coming back, because they've done something that they just didn't think about.
And keep spending money.
And then, once the hearing's done, you know, I get the, the copy of whatever the decision was, you know, it's a patch of the building file, and after the appeals period, they come on and interrogate.
So, we put, we've put it in our rule, we had just adopted rules and regulations last month, which I know you took a look at at some point, that we encourage people to go to you first, so hopefully people will take us up on that, but as of now, it's not required.
And, you know, the reality is, if they don't come to me, it's a lot less work for me, so I'm thrilled with that, too.
Well, there are some cases, you know, they're going to have to come here no matter what, so.
Right, right, but from a...
Like the one before this, I mean, that's...
Communication standpoint, it does help to have them come sit, and, you know, if I can say, here's the application, you know, fill out the best you can, you know, give Julie a shout, say, you know, here you go, it does help.
Yeah.
I don't know if, do we, our, the permitting guide that was being worked on when I first got here...
Yeah, it's on there.
Was it suggested, or a...
Oh, they, they come to you?
Yeah, yeah, I know we addressed process in there, so...
I think it probably is suggested.
We may want to just make sure that that jives with whatever our process is. Again, either way is fine, I mean, I don't mind doing it, but like I said, it is more work, so I don't mind not doing it.
Okay.
I'm all for doing less work.
Yeah, it's, you catch the, the one out of however many that, that didn't know they needed a certain relief, and we had, we had somebody not that long ago who was getting a variance, but we're like, don't you also need a special permit for this, and they didn't know, and so...
Well, that's kind of, you know, it's...
It catches those people.
Right, so they don't come here and they start over next month, because they missed something, and not to say I haven't ever missed anything, but...
Right.
But at least it's somebody looking at it, yeah.
To send it through.
Yeah, okay. Do you have any thoughts about what we should be doing to help you, or thoughts from you guys, though, what Sam can do to help us?
I like the new form, you know, once decisions are written, if I just get the copies emailed off, that's great, just so when they come in, I can...
Sure.
Look at, you know, the appeals period, so I don't start giving permits before they do, and that.
The new bylaws were adopted this past town meeting, and you had a lot, you know, have been put into those, you're working with a living document now, have, you know, we saw one ambiguity that needs some tweaking, and some language, probably editing.
There's, there's a lot in there that needs...
Well, are you keeping a list, because you're on the front lines, people come to you and you say, oh, let me look at it probably, and you're like, I see your point, so are you, are you keeping, you know, notes on that, so that maybe we could have another meeting or a workshop to some degree and say, these are things that, you know, there's inconsistencies in this document, or cross-referencing.
Absolutely, absolutely, it's one of the things, our committee, you know, we started with, with four items.
The plan was to fix it.
Right, and, and that's, we want to bring... Right, and, and that's, we wanna bring to town meeting something that's digestible, we don't want people to be overwhelmed and get annoyed that we're, you know, spending six hours of their evening. So, we're trying to take the, the most problematic piece, you know, the first thing we did is definitions, you gotta know what the words were.
But, but simplistically, if you went before town meeting on amendment and say, we're gonna change this definition to a, a mean interior living space and not, and not to include the wall space.
Right, right, little stuff like that.
People could understand that.
Yeah.
I don't think you'd have too much debate on town meeting floor on that, I, I think it would just, yeah.
Something in Newbury, about ten years ago, we did the buy, just what we did this last go around and reorganized, and then slowly, it took us, I don't know, three, four, five years to kinda go through each article and clean it up. And now, the list I keep is more, if I get complaints from citizens saying, hey, we really wish you either stop this or allow this, I keep a list, bring it to planning and say, this is what I'm hearing from the townspeople, you know. And, you know, that's how we generate our articles now, is based on really citizen input and, and why I see his problems, or if something comes up that is a.
If you agree, you know, if they come before you and say, well, that just doesn't make any sense, this isn't fair, or this is cumbersome.
Yep.
You know, it's not practical.
Right, and a lot of times, this stuff that we read and it sounds great, and then you get a certain project that goes through and you go, yeah, that makes no sense at all. And you have to go back and say, okay, we gotta fix that, so I absolutely, as things come in, also citizen complaints, we've had a few people reach out with suggestions for changes already, I've got a, you know, a pile going, some are good suggestions, some are less good suggestions.
Like square footage on the shed, it's like a hundred square feet or something?
Yeah, well, and it's stuff like that, that we look at it.
Can't put up a ten by twelve, I mean, it's, you know.
They upped it to two hundred square feet.
Oh, they, they did, huh?
But still needs to meet zoning setbacks, so that's, that's kinda the stuff where people go, well, I don't need a permit, but, so why do I need to meet the setbacks? And then that's up to really what, what's the town.
Cause your neighbor doesn't want it, you know, a one inch from their driveway and they're backing out.
Yep.
Or it's blocking their window.
Yeah.
That's why you need setbacks.
I don't wanna smell your lawnmower.
Well, the fire department can't get in there and put a ladder up, cause the shed's in the way of the, you know, the house.
Yeah, we had one like that.
There's reasons for setbacks, so.
We did have a question that came up last month, cause we'd been several months without any zoning board applications, and we were wondering if you had seen applications come in for like uses or developments that wouldn't have been allowed under the old bylaws that now just sailed through, or? No, it was just, it was just a slow summer.
Just a lucky month, lucky month or two.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no real new anything that was like, oh, that, you know, that helped, most of what's come in that I've looked at is stuff that we're looking at for spring town meeting, accessory apartments and things of that nature, right, but that, that didn't work if it gets passed, so.
But in terms of businesses, I mean, the, the matrix with the permits by right, I mean, those, those were all special permitted before.
Right, we just haven't had anyone come in for a new business quite yet.
So, it's not, it's not that the ZBA is obsolete, that the business is just, you know, it's dead.
Just happened to be a couple of slow months, that's all, yeah.
Well, that's not good, we wanted to help businesses, speed up the process and cut the red tape.
It's there if they need it, you know, it's gonna be in the last couple of months, but.
Business is always slow at the end of the summer, anyway.
Well, but I think making, you know, everything clear has, you know, cause we would get a lot of people say, well, I'm not really sure of what I need. So, sometimes it's nice to have it just spelled out.
With people who've called up and said, hey, what can I do if I were to buy this property, realtors love it.
Yes.
They, they will, cause if they're marketing a property, they can just go to the table and say, okay, here's, here's what you can and can't do.
It's predictability, and you're making a big decision and an investment in a property, property's not cheap, so.
It's ease of use too, you're not trying to decipher and jump section to section, it's all right there in a table, you know, what are you doing, what's your zone, and then go pick it. So, and like you said, we, we, you know, any of the little misses, like we renumbered instead of R A R B R C because of the business and commercial confusion, we did one, two, three. You know, there's a couple misses in here, but yeah, at, at town meeting, we'll throw that type of stuff on and make sure we do some house cleaning or keeping, but.
What, what about other matrix, I mean, it looks like in every, um, industrial, I guess, in the industrial zones, everything is a per, um, needs a site plan review.
Yeah, something.
It looked like site plan review on everything.
It, it's site plan review.
For new construction.
For new construction.
Now, would, would that be add-ons and, you know, you have an existing, you know, like Chesterton, you know, Chesterton's got a big property and they've been there for a long time and, uh, you know, for them, for them to add on, you know. You know, go out another twenty feet in the rear and it's kinda out of sight, out of mind, like, you know, I, I think it's a little silly, they gotta come in for a rear signage, you know. Put it this way, if they didn't need the, uh, variance on the front sign, for them to come in for the rear signs, I think would be ludicrous. But they're following the law.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what, what is the purpose of that, if you, if, if you, you know, they, they call it a campus, I mean, if it's a campus sign, what do they need a permit for? It's not gonna offend anybody in the neighborhood, it's not gonna change the character of the neighborhood under a, a variance, uh, line of, line of reasoning.
Do we have any other similar properties, that's the thing?
Zoning isn't a catch-all, it's a general bylaw, and there's always gonna be your oddball.
Yeah.
They're an oddball, you know, uh, because of their size, the likelihood we're gonna have another Chesterton sized business, probably not great. If we do, then at that point, or if that starts to become the norm, then you adjust your zoning to, to fit that, so they don't have to go through a silly process.
Yeah.
But, but the process function like it's supposed to, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
No, but let's just say they needed just the directional sign in the rear, for them to spend four hundred dollars to come in here on that, it just seems a little.
You know, if they snuck it in, would anyone notice, probably not, you know, is that the right thing to do, and I'm certainly not advocating for it.
No, it's, no, you play by the rules.
Enforcement official, but, you know, it, it's, to some degree, it's costly doing business, you know, and I hate to throw that on someone, but it, it is.
And it, it is by far not the worst town, you know, if that's our worst offense, we are doing okay, I think.
I'm just trying to cut the red tape, you know, I'm a red tape cutter, you know?
Make it work, then we make it work.
Laws should always conform to common sense and common experience, you know, they should.
But I think that the site plan review aspect is, is, you know, it's a, it's a planning board issue, I think, you know, I, Sam is the whisperer to the planning board for us, but.
I think. No, but I think to give some, I, I think it shouldn't be required that it has site, a, a, a site plan review, um, well, let me, let me strike that. The planning board should have discretion if they think it doesn't need a full site plan, you know what I'm saying, i- i- if it's a minor change, you really need to hire the engineers and everybody and spend thousands of dollars and come in here with a whole exhibit and everything, do you?
I think that's something that will.
Put the show on.
Will come up soon in, in our.
So.
Pieces to revise, usually your towns have triggers, whether it be increase in parking spaces, uh, you know, square footage of a certain amount of building or a percentage, so that if.
So, there's a threshold to cross.
Absolutely, so if you're, you're a Chesterton, you have a hundred thousand square feet and you're adding two thousand.
It's, it's a small percentage change, it's relative.
It can be pushed aside if we choose to do that, where if you're a two thousand square foot building and you're adding two thousand, well, come on in and see us, we wanna make sure that you're developing that site appropriately.
But would the planning board, based on our zoning bylaws, have to have us insist upon a, a site plan review?
That we're gonna, you know.
Would they have to insist upon?
Push some arms and see if we.
No, I think they oughta have discretion to say, you know what, you got, you know, a thousand acres or whatever, and yeah, you can add a, you can add a porch on the back and we don't need all the blueprints here and everything else.
Right, if we put those triggers in writing as to, hey, if, if you do these things, you know, we can just move you forward.
It's discretionary in the board, you know, if it's, if it's de minimis.
Usually if it's triggering some kind of threshold, like for example, our parking requirements, if you have a certain square footage, you have to have, you know, you have to have so many parking spaces per square feet, so if you're changing something that, that would affect that change or affect lighting standards or affect some other, I don't know that we have that many performance standards in our bylaw, but that's typically, I mean, to, otherwise, you, you're kinda setting up the planning board for like arbitrary decisions, I don't, I mean, I don't really know.
So, it's trying to turn set guidelines.
I don't know that it's arbitrary, I think right now, it's kinda a little too, you know, mandatory that you have to have site.
It catches, yeah, it's too much.
It's too, it's too wide a net, it, it, it catches everything.
But we're, we're, we're working in that direction, we've got it tabled at least now, we've got some allowed uses, and then now the, the idea is to start knocking some of that process out.
At the workshop, it was brought up that it only applied to new construction, right? So, we need to add a couple more, you know, uh, words or sentences to say, except for, you know, or in the, in the discretion of the planning board if, if deemed trivial. So, there's gotta be some threshold there, otherwise, it's an absolute.
It's actually a little strange, cause sometimes a change in use could need a site plan review more so than new construction, but.
Yeah, I think, you know.
I think we all agree that it's something that needs to be addressed.
The section's old and needs a rewrite, is the bottom line. And we wanna make it easier for businesses to do their busi- you know, it, it's one of the problems that, that we had seen before where people would come in, you know, on room one, and they'd say, hey, I wanna do this. And we'd say, okay, well, you gotta go through site plan, you gotta go through this pressure, through this process, and they'd go, I'm either gonna go to Salisbury or down the street and Rowley where I can just go do it. And, you know, you'd lose business, and that, that's what we wanna try and avoid here, is to, to not have these guys go, I can cross the bridge and go into Hable and just do it as of right. You know, but still maintain some control that we can say, okay, this is gonna be a nice looking site, we don't want it to be.
I understand.
You know, garbage either, and look like some sections of room one that aren't.
How, how, how does, uh, Newbury handle it in terms of, do they have the same mandatory site plan review requirements that, that, that we do?
Nope, uh, lesser threshold, there's, there's triggers, uh, use changes, parking changes, percentages of buildings, things of that nature.
Coverage, right?
Yeah, so, so we can start looking at it, this is gonna have a, a, a large visual impact or a large impact in traffic or something like that where, you know, people are gonna notice this, we want them to come in. If you're changing something like the, the dance studio up the street to dance studio, do we want a site plan review because the guys, you know, doing the same thing, or changing the bead store to the young store?
There was already a site plan review when they put the strip mall in, so why, why do you need to be redundant?
Right, and that's the stuff we wanna.
You know, if it was already approved for office space.
Yeah, same thing with the zoning.
Unless you're changing it to retail or a restaurant or something, why would you need a site plan review on it?
To come into zoning to go from a dance studio to a dance studio is ridiculous, so that's the type of stuff we, we wanna scrub out of the documents so that we're not, you know, abusing these.
So, can, can, can that, can that be added for the, you know, town meeting, can that be added?
I don't know about this one.
I don't think it's gonna, yeah.
You're gonna go, you're gonna go, yeah, three, yeah, two?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna take a while, honestly, I mean, it, it really, we, we're twenty years sitting on this document, so to rush it at the end is, we wouldn't do ourselves any favors. We picked four of the most, I guess.
Controversial issues, I guess.
Hot items and picked those, we're, we're through two, we're this close on the other two.
What are the, what are the four controversial, accessory use, apartments and laws?
Accessory apartments, yep, um.
I think Sam got the memo, um, Sam wasn't at our last meeting, we're, we've actually tabled the accessory apartments for this year.
You tabled it?
Yeah.
Why?
With Mitch Corona's acquiescence, um, apparently Mitch and Jim feel that the state is going to address accessory apartments in some kind of legislation, legislative or policy manner in the next year and want to not change something, only to change it again in a short amount of time.
Count on Beacon Hill to do anything, I mean, you could, you know.
They've been talking about that change for twenty years.
You know.
I said that, um, it was.
They're gonna take the tolls off the Mass Pike tour, I heard. That once it was paid for, they were supposed to take the tolls now.
I, Dan, I, you know.
I mean, they lie, is what they do, all right?
Well, feel free to come to our next meeting, it's on the sixteenth.
No, 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 in all seriousness, you know, I'm not being facetious in the least, accessory use apartment are frequent flyers down here, that is why, that's, we're the customer service department for people that want their family to live in the public policy, and the legislature should address it because, you know, eh, no one should have to go in a nursing home unless, somebody can't take care of them, they just can't, you know? So, you know, the public policy is to, you know, prevent homelessness and to keep families, uh, close together and do what you can to help out, uh, you know, your loved ones.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
We'll ask for an update at the November meeting.
But to kick the can on that and wait for Beacon Hill, I, I mean, sorry for me being, you know, critical of that, it's, it's just, you know, come on, those guys, you know.
The other thing you have to remember though, Dan, is that it's not.
They're going to fundraisers right now, you know?
It's not a zoning board initiative, we're only members who voice our opinions, but we don't make decisions.
No, I'm, we're not a policymaking board, but.
The workshop, I mean, that's what I meant.
Where, where there's an ambiguity and there's a problem with it, we can make recommendations ultimately, it's the board of selectmen that brings forward the, um, the warrant articles. But we could make recommendations to the, to the board of selectmen and say, hey, listen, we're seeing this, the people of Groveland come before us for accessory use apartments, and we're, we're having problems with this, the way it's written, and maybe we can make recommendations. It's up to the board of selectmen if they wanna promote the, and, 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 and present the warrant, we could always do a citizen's petition, any one of us, you need ten signatures, you can go before a town meeting on a warrant article.
Bring it in, I got an article for you.
You got an article for me, I don't think it's ever been done, I'll be the first, you know, pioneer to get shot doing it, but you know, if you got something good, I'll take it to town meeting.
So, accessory apartments was on the list, definitions, which would sound simple, but because of the impact throughout the document, it's a larger article than you'd think.
Home occupations.
And what was the fourth thing?
Do you have the bottom dimensions?
The dimensional requirements on the laws, um, cause we, we have some language in there that basically the math doesn't work, and for some reason, there's a pushback not to change it to let the math work. I'll just leave it at that, we're, we're pushing forward.
Who's pushing back?
Others on the board, um, I, I, I'm not quite grasping.
Planning board?
Yeah, on, on our committee, I should say, uh, so.
But no, Jim was gonna bring it to, to the planning board as, as we drafted it, taking out the lot width definition and changing the circle to accommodate the setbacks.
Okay.
So, he was gonna bring it forward with, with the disclaimer, he didn't know how it was gonna go, so.
Cool.
Um, but, but so home occupations is now would be an as of, if it is adopted at town meeting would be as of right, unless, unless you.
Wouldn't have to come through the process, unless they're outside the scope.
Unless they don't meet the certain criteria, um, and then they would come for a special permit, so.
All right.
So, that's listening that.
We are making progress.
And you'll tell me what you want on the citizen's petition, eh?
I'm, I'm in my office Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I need ten signatures, you know, I've only one, I need nine more.
I'm, I'm not a.
You can't sign.
My, my goal here is just to make this enforceable and easy to use for the citizenry, as far as what the content is, it's not my town, and I, I've tried to make that clear on the committee that it's, you know, if you wanna allow skyscrapers or cottages, doesn't really matter to me, you know, and, and I, I, I do care about the town, I, I live nearby and it's, you know, it's the area I grew up in. But I don't wanna push my influence on how the town develops or doesn't develop, I just wanna have something that when someone comes to me, I can say yes or no, not, I don't know, you know, uh, which is unfortunately way too often that it's, it's that answer, and that's why we're, we're, we're getting through this and slowly but surely getting there.
No, but I like to pick your brain, and we have some new issues in zoning and, and, you know, with the, uh, retail sale of the marijuana coming, coming out, you know, um, so.
Yeah, we just had a moratorium shut down last week, so.
Right, so, so how, how, you know, how is that gonna work within our bylaws? It's just permitted by right as a retail establishment?
Uh, well, not in this town, but in, in Newbury, we had our town meeting, uh, last week, a special town meeting, and they voted down, uh, the moratorium, so as of, I think it's April, the, uh, the stay is off. So, if someone comes in with a retail proposal for a, you know, marijuana facility, you know, put it right next to the paki, uh, and get your, your weed and your beer all in one, one stock.
So, the, the town, the townspeople decided not to, to lift the moratorium, it wasn't?
Yep, yep, so they're gonna try again in the spring, cause they, the planning board feels they are not ready, um, but, you know, they did not get the two thirds vote to, to put it off, yeah, so.
To block it, yeah.
Well, um, so, anything else that you want us to do to facilitate or?
No, really, I mean, I think any improvements are good and running it through process and see how it works and, you know, come back and if it's working, great, if there's tweaks, fix them. In the meantime, I'll, I'll talk to the software company and see if it's something, you know, that they can accommodate and maybe make easier for you guys from the communication and, and tracking standpoint.
That'd be huge.
The worst they say is no.
Okay, yeah, okay, great.
And then they have it already done for another town, that we can just pirate and, you know, fill in if they're lacking or have extra info, we can either delete or add as needed, so, um, they're pretty easy to work with.
Excellent, I love that it's all tied together too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't wait. Yeah, I can't wait till they get the MVPC, the MyMap program, in there. Because right now they have mapping, so I can map out like what my permits are, I can do like a Google Earth type of thing, but I can't get pictometry, I can't get the overlays until I, you know, without jumping back and forth. To be able to just open that up and toggle any map I want while I'm looking at my permit and filling it out is just very cool. I think that's cool if you're the answer, for anyone else that might have.
Thanks for coming.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate your input. It's pretty good, yeah, before nine?
That's good.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do you guys want to talk about the application form a little bit? If you had any questions, comments?
I forgot to print it, I did look at it.
I love it, I read it.
I do just want to point out for.
Except for the shading, I'm not crazy on shading. Tough to read, do you type in the shaded area or outside the shaded area?
But then how do you differentiate the box from like the category from like where you?
I don't know, I'm more of a bullet point kind of guy, you know, numbered.
All right, well, moving on.
Well, you're only one vote.
And just wanted to.
She asked for comments, you know, otherwise I would, you know.
I was thinking more about substance.
I keep quiet, otherwise. You know lawyers, if you can't make a substantive change, you make a stylistic change. You gotta make a change to the document, nothing goes. Nothing goes out the door.
Well, I was hoping that people would decide to type this, so that, well, and this was, you know, kind of the first go, you know, if Sam can get a program for however it works that he was talking about, that'd be great, if not, I would hope that I can, either I can figure out or I can get somebody at work to help me figure out how to make it a PDF that's fillable, so that all you do is put your cursor in the box and go. But I think I got all of the information requests that we had talked about, you know, zoning district, which we don't always get, deed information so that we can write the decisions a little easier, make sure that they're recorded, all the dimensional stuff, frontage setbacks, lot size, size of the dwelling, whether the owner owns any adjacent land, which matters for, you know, if there's a non-conforming structure or a lot, you know, if they own adjacent land, those can merge. And also stating what non-conformities there are. Sometimes we get those Section Six applications, and it's not clear why it's non-conforming. And then sort of what they're proposing, and then also just information for us about what else might, the application might trigger, like whether it's in a flood plain or in a conservation commission jurisdiction or in the Zone One or Zone Two, just so we kind of have a better picture of the property.
Did you put in there, I read this when you first sent it out, but I'm trying to remember. Did you ask them to submit a copy of the property record card?
I did.
You did, okay, I know we talked about it.
Yeah, property card from Groveland Assessor, and I'm putting it in the website where you can get it online.
Perfect. She thought of everything.
So I did just put in site plans at a scale, you know, one inch to 40 inch to, sorry, one inch equals 40 feet. We don't typically get large scale plans, and I don't typically want to see them, so I think that's an appropriate scale. I did want to point out that our current application does in fact require site plans to be stamped by a P or a registered landsaver, surveyor, so it's not out there. We actually do require it already, but I didn't include it in the application if the board still feels that that's too much.
You're looking at me.
I'm looking this way, I'm just looking at Jason, too.
I'm adamant against requiring that, you know. I sent you one of my applications for, you know, up in, you know, Maine there.
It was in a different state.
Doesn't matter, I mean, actually, this system runs a lot smoother than this town, so, I mean, anyone who wants to knock, you know, Maine, I mean, they got their act together up there in that town.
I'm just saying it's a different process.
But you pull the plot plan, right, and.
From where? Where do you get them?
Got it from Town Hall.
So you got their tax map?
I went to the assessor's office, they gave me a picture of, you know, the plot plan and my house dimensions on it, and it had some of the setbacks on it, and then I labeled the rest. I went out there with a tape measure and measured the bulkhead and the porch, dimensions out and across, and I labeled things, and I put the abutters names on the side streets.
And they took your word for it?
Yes.
Did you have to sign under pains and penalties of perjury?
Well, it's to the best of your knowledge anyways, under pains and penalties of perjury. You can still be incompetent and under pains and penalties of perjury, you just can't have the intention to deceive anybody.
Is there competence?
Listen, I put a porch on my house, because there was an illegal egress from the second floor, you know, and it was a safety variance, and a little bit crazy to hire an engineer, a PE, to put a four by eight deck in a.
But you needed zoning relief?
Yeah, because I had to come out eight feet, and the setback was 20. I had to come out eight, and I had, what, 25 feet, how's the math? I needed a three-foot variance on a staircase, whatever it was, tired. CPA's not working right now. But, yeah, it's just silly to spend, you know. It would have cost me a couple thousand dollars to get a stamped drawing to put a, you know, $5,000 staircase. So I'm all for, you know, saving the customer some money, obviously if it's.
But I, don't you think we need to be clear that we're accurate, and, you know, that?
Who's to say you're not accurate? I mean, we've had guys come in here and, you know, they draw the garage and it's, you know.
Trust me, I remember.
And it's, you know, the thing, it was like, it wasn't proportionate in any way to what was on the site plan. So things of that nature, I think we sent them away and said you had to draw it to scale.
Yeah, I don't remember if we actually got a scale drawing, but.
Oh, did we?
I think we did. I think eventually we did.
So if we're not happy with the drawings, because it looks like someone drew it with a crayon and it's incompetent, I think we could use our discretion on that, but to just cut blanks, say everyone's got to get a PE to sign it, you know. The other thing, you know, when I run across these things in my life, and, you know, you can tell that I get irritated from time to time, because I seem to step in these things, you know.
I don't think Dan's ever been irritated.
Yeah, I get irritated.
Let's check the notes.
All right, so I have an office, anybody who knows me, I got an office in Danvers. So I wanted to put up just a sheet rock wall, you know, non-structural, non, you know, load-bearing.
In Danvers? Good for you.
Yeah, oh, so we'll get a load of this, you know, it's an office condo and an office building bit, because the whole complex is more than, you know, make up a number 30,000 cubic feet, right? It couldn't just be my contractor with a supervisor's license. You got to get an architect, an architect.
Everything.
Yeah, to put an eight-foot sheet rock wall up. It's ridiculous, it's absolutely insane, okay? So, yeah, am I rebellious against the bureaucracy when it comes to those things? Yeah, they're mind-boggling in that they defy all sense of reason. It's like, we all wear shoes, we don't all wear size nine, and it forces us that, well, you know, no matter how big the project or how small it is, you've got to go hire engineers. You shouldn't have to hire an engineer to put a second means of egress off your house, because you need a fire accident, you know? Not necessarily, I'm sure there's some eye before we accept after C exceptions, but to put in all of our applications that we need a stamped PE, you're only going to make money for the PE's. It's bad customer service for the people.
But aren't you, I mean, I don't really want to argue about it all that much, but.
Well, you asked me my opinion, I don't want it on there. I'll vote against the application if you put it in there.
I get it.
A vote against it, it can three to one me, but I'm gonna tell you.
You know, you're not giving good customer service to the whole rest of the town if you're not ensuring that you're evaluating something that's accurate.
We haven't had, we haven't had the problem to this point in time.
It's actually been a requirement, apparently we haven't been enforcing it, but.
Well, and that's why it hasn't been a problem. If we enforced it, it'd be a problem for half the people walking through the door here. We'd send them away saying, your drawings don't meet the requirement, you need to leave and come back with a PE drawing. You're gonna upset every other person, everyone walking through the door here. I was impressed by that drawing there for a sign. I mean, what did that cost the guy? Thousands of dollars for, you know, you know, so.
Okay.
I don't want it on there, but again, I'm one of four.
And I drafted it because of that, I did not include it, so.
Thank you, but you can see I'm passionate about this.
I can see that.
Because I'm a businessman, and I live in the real world, and I walk into these punches, I walk right into one.
I've spent my life doing this as well, so, you know, did you have a comment?
If somebody draws it and labels all the dimensions to their measurements, and it's wrong, then that basically nullifies the permit anyway, because they were inaccurate.
They proceed at their own peril.
So, I mean, we might miss a foot here and there, but nobody's going to miss a 20, you know, like five, 10-foot setback difference.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that on the macro scale, it's probably not, it's, but it's, you know, I don't know what problems we'd be creating.
The other thing we don't require is we don't require surveyed plans. So how do you know that the building is where it is? How do you know it is? Engineer's gonna stamp it, is he gonna go out there and set up his transits and measure everything? He's gonna get his, you know, GPS going, and he's gonna tell you where all the points are? Or is he gonna do a drive-by survey like they do in the mortgage business? And they drive by and they have a property card, they drive by the property. You know the mortgage business, right? They drive by on a mortgage survey, and they say, yeah, it looks like the house is in the property lines, yeah, okay. And then they send you a bill for 150 bucks for a piece of paper, and all they did was stamp it.
Well, and that's what I'm concerned about, is that you're asking people to use their mortgage plot plans, which all mortgage plot plan says is the house is on the property, not where it is on the property. And so if people are taking those and then drawing on them, then they're not accurate.
They're inaccurate, I've seen them. I've seen the porch on the neighbor's lawn, the driveway's half and half.
Right, so if, okay, with that said, so now somebody comes to you with one of those, how are you supposed to know if it's on the neighbor's lawn or not? How are we supposed to determine that?
They proceed at their own risk. They draw it, and if the setback's 15 feet and they, you know, build their house five feet of the property line, they run the risk they're gonna tear the building down, okay? It's on them, they have to be accurate. But here's the thing, if, sometimes it may be simply a moot point. They want to build something, and they have so much setback, it's not even an issue. They might just need a special permit to do something, you know. So it may be inconsequential that their drawing is a little bit off, you know, for the purpose of why they're here. Now, if they're building a building and they want it to be exactly on the setback, you know, right up to 15 feet or 20 or whatever it is, they better be accurate, you know? It better be measured, you know? But if they come before us and they want a special permit because, you know, something they're asking for isn't in the matrix, how relevant, you know, how relevant is the plot plan going to be on the accuracy?
Well, but how big does the property have to be to require one, Dan? So like, for example, if they were gonna do, if Estes Park came in again, would we say, well, written on the back of a napkin, is all right, we can say it's kind of, it's a big property, I'm sure it's fine.
No, we haven't received napkins, so, you know.
But there's been a couple that I think that have been copied napkins, but.
We retain discretion, the man that came through, and he wanted the garage, and he didn't have the setbacks in the rear, and the abutter behind him didn't seem to care. I think we sent him away for a better drawing, so if.
Well, he didn't have any drawing at first, I don't think.
Yeah, so if we don't like what we see, we can ask for a continuance. We just, you know, somebody motions and we continue it, say, we don't have enough information here, or it looks, appears to be inaccurate.
Well, that's not very customer friendly, which is what you say you want to be.
But they brought it on themselves.
Right, but if you require, if you tell them what you want and they submit it, then they at least have played by the rules. But if you say, well, sort of, and then maybe we'll look at it, and if we don't like it, we'll send you back again. Now, I just had to do a signed permit, okay? And I had to do 10 copies of site plans, they all had to be done, plus what the sign's gonna look like. I mean, you just, you have to do it, it's part of the rules.
We need to change the rules, crappy rules, you know?
Well.
You know?
Citizen petition, feel free.
You want more regulations?
Well, we can, this can live to fight another day, because this isn't in final form, so we can keep thinking about it, and I know I didn't hit the nail on the head perfectly the first time around, so if you have any other substantive comments on the application form, we can talk about them again next time. Does that sound okay? Yeah? One thing that I realized that we didn't do, which was one of my real reasons for adopting the new rules and regs, was to vote a vice chair, to act as chair in case of absence, incapacity, conflict of interest of the chair. So I think we should do that, just in case I, you know, get hit by a bus next week.
Well, that's not allowed, that's all.
I think everybody has their finger on their nose.
If I was hit by a bus, we wouldn't be having a meeting anyway.
Well, yeah, we need some more members, but you guys could at least do invoices.
Something we want to do least.
Any nominations? Charlie for vice chair? Anybody want to be vice chair? It's fun.
I don't want to be.
You don't want to be vice chair?
No.
I don't want to be.
Jason?
I nominate Dan.
I decline. Not only that, I refuse.
Team player, okay. No? Jason, you want, Jason?
I could do it.
If I'm chair, I'd be way too opinionated, they can't help it.
You'd be vice chair.
When you're not chair, your opinions are.
Well, when I'm not the chair, the chair can say, that's enough, Dan.
Well, then I, I'll nominate Jason.
If I'm the chair, I can just keep talking. No one would be able to.
No one would ever get any permits, ever.
No one would be able to stop me, because the chair controls the meetings under state law.
Kick them under the table.
It's true. Can I stop you now?
You could, yeah, and if I don't stop, you have to ask me to leave.
Where's my gavel? Where's the cop in the back of the room to escort you? So I've nominated Jason, since everyone else has declined. Is there any discussion?
I'll second it, thanks, Jason.
Seconded? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
We'll talk. Okay, so moving on, I think we are up to invoices. So, let's see, I have an invoice, invoice number 2017-8 dated October 31st, 2017, payable to Julie House for a total of 196.65.
It's broken down, that's the way, it's broken down now, that's the way I'm told to do it.
Okay, so it's.
So some of it's for, like, the application, like, the application, I spent on the application processing it, and then the other time was for, like, doing board stuff, like, taking minutes.
Which we asked her to do, so that we could keep track of how much the applications are really costing us, remember, if you recall?
Okay, so it's a total of 196.65, broken down to 124.20 and 72.45. Is the 124.20 the application processing, the higher amount?
No. No, that was for the meeting.
For the meetings, okay, so the higher amount is for-
The wood stuff.
Processing the meeting stuff. Uh, and while we're doing that, we also have minutes from the October fourth, two thousand seventeen meeting, uh, that were circulated in advance, um, and then there was a, an edited version also circulated, um, for review. And while you guys are looking at those, um, I just wanted to note again, um, circulated a, a Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, C, is it C T P C?
I think so, yeah.
Assistant training, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that there's a training on the thirteenth and April for, you know, role of planning and zoning board, um, if, if anybody was interested in going, uh, the board can fund it, I think it's only thirty dollars, um, but you should sign up yourselves and then seek creative support.
Yes, I forgot to do that, but yes, I will.
And I sent the information to everybody, so, you should have it in your emails.
And then there's also, um, this coming Monday, the Groveland Housing Workshop.
That's right.
Casey and I attended the last one, if anyone's interested, it's a kind of part two. But it's Monday night and it's here in this room, um, at seven o'clock. I'd like to make a motion to approve invoice for Julie House in the amount of one ninety-six sixty-five.
I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor?
Any discussion?
Did you want to discuss it?
No.
Just wants to be contrary. Yeah, I actually read them when you sent them out, so, I'll look into it. Has everyone reviewed the minutes now?
Yes, I have.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve them. The minutes from October fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Any discussion?
Not for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan did.
Dan.
Uh, any other topics of discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's it for us, thank you.
The ayes have it.